Yeah, Brian, it's cold in here.
Cold?
Mm-hmm.
It's 72. I don't know.
It's a lot better than this afternoon.
Was it 72 or you went 90?
Well, it was like 60 in here this afternoon.
It was 90 in here.
Was it?
During our planning commission meeting, yeah.
No, Jack Short was well asleep.
I can't hear you.
I know. You're all right.
I'd call to order the meeting for Bryan City Council for Monday, November 20th, 2023. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. Start the evening off. Mayor has something she would like to say?
Yes. As you are aware, there will be a vacancy in Ward Four for the Bryan City Council seat beginning January 1, 2024. Any parties interested in filling this position must be a registered voter within the Ward Four boundary. Applicants should send via email or mail their letter of interest and resume to me. Our P.O. box is listed on the website, PO Box 190, and then my email is mayor@cityofbryan.com. The deadline for a receipt is Thursday, November 30th, 2023. Once I compile all of those, I will communicate that with the council president, and we will set a special meeting or maybe add it to the December meeting just for you guys to do the interviews. Again, can't appoint anyone until after that January 1 deadline. But I talked to Derek Schultz, BME director. He also has a seat open with BPA, and we thought we would just start this process sooner than later so that we had qualified candidates in those seats as soon as we could at the beginning of the year. This ad will be placed in the Bryan Times. Christie sent that over to them and confirmed it today. So that will, I don't know what day they're running it with the holiday, but again, the deadline for those letters of interest and resumes are Thursday, November 30th. Resumes are not required. It's just if they want to send that along, but definitely a letter of interest. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Start the agenda with the approval of the minutes for the November 6 meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes. Next item is Clerk Treasor's report.
Yes, council has received financial statements, bank statements, bank reconciliation for the month ending October 31st. And as usual, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have now or at any time in the future.
Seems like it spiked a little bit on the revenue side. Was it more tax receipts came in? Am I misreading what you just handed out?
Um...
Because you look confused.
No, I hadn't, I had, a spike hadn't, I had not registered a spike.
Oh, well, that's a fair question. It appears as though, it appears as though that it was last month on receipts. It looks like September was 562,000, October was 868,000. Spike may not be a good word. There was an increase. Is there anything in particular that assisted that increase that came to your mind? If not, that's fine. We can...
Grant reimbursements?
Well, for talking specifically about income tax, I would say there's just, and you can see that, you can see the chart on the bottom for the month of October. It's almost identical to last October.
Right.
There's just a natural variation in the way, in the timing of the way some of these things hit. So, you know, the previous month was maybe a little lower than a year ago, and this month was a little higher.
Yeah.
It's just, I wouldn't attribute it to anything more than a natural variation.
Okay. Well, that's really all my question was. It was just, is there anything that stood out? And apparently, no, the answer is no, not really. Thank you.
Yep.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is an ordinance. John, would you please number and read?
Yes, ordinance number 52, 2023. An ordinance prohibiting adult-use cannabis operators, adult-use cultivators, and adult-use dispensaries from operating within the city of Bryan.
Counsel, I want to make you aware of a few things. One, you have a similar ordinance following this as well that has a little less restriction. These are all for discussion. Once I get what I think is consensus, if we can get to that tonight, I'll have Mark draft a subsequent ordinance or not, depending on what your conversation is. But in 2016, that city council passed an ordinance that actually prohibited and put a moratorium on any retail dispensing of marijuana for medicinal use. So that currently exists in the city and has since 2016. However, with the ballot passage of issue two, we believe that all medicinal licensing, once the State Department of Commerce starts getting their rules and regs in, will take out medicinal, and it will all be recreational at that point. There will be no point for just medicinal dispensaries. So we don't have to do anything with this ordinance. It will go away on its own. But we do anticipate about a nine-month process. We're hearing September of 2024 before the state will be issuing any licensing for recreational marijuana. With that being said, it's my job to tell you whether you have options or not on certain things, and on this one, you do. Home rule does apply, especially with the federal rules of marijuana. I did have some incorrect information when I initially had the election results. It appeared to me there was an overwhelming vote for, against issue two. It's really 51-49 now for the city of Bryan voters. So it was pretty much 50-50 on how people felt about it in the city. I will also say we had over 50% voter turnout, which is unprecedented in a non-gubernatorial or presidential election. So very high voter turnout, so people did come to speak about that. So I do want you to keep those things in mind. This ordinance that you're looking at right now is for a ban of all cultivators, operators, and dispensaries within the city limits. So that is something, obviously, the next one is C3. Your other option is to just do nothing, let the medicinal run its course, and just have recreational marijuana on the books as the state chooses to license it. So with that, I will turn the floor over to all of you.
First off, wasn't that issue two and not issue one?
Yep, I apologize.
Okay.
So do we have any idea what the state's going to do?
None.
At all? So with doing these ordinance now, could they end up being voided out or...
You can amend them.
Okay.
Yeah, they do recommend, though, that whatever you do be put in place by December 7th because what they don't want is a reactionary. The other way, like, say you don't like what the Department of Commerce did, and then you say, well, we're just going to ban it altogether, and they've already issued license. They don't, they don't want that to happen.
Which is my concern.
Sure.
My concern is it seems as though we have more local control.
Now?
And I'm, yes, and I'm very much interested in someone correcting me on that. But after reading the 79-page Ohio Revised Code and after talking to a couple of lawyers, it's my understanding that, I don't know if it's, if it's correct to say it's, "Speak now or forever hold your peace municipalities", but it seems as though, I haven't heard an answer to, so if we don't do anything and we wait until nine months or whatever when the state says, "Here are your parameters", is that locked in? Because if the answer to that is yes, you really can't do anything about it at that point in time. You have until December 7th to speak your piece as to what you would want locally, what limiting parameters you would like to have locally. And I'm a little more interested in that than waiting on the state to dictate to our city what limitations we want put on the current Ohio Revised Code, 3708.01. So do we, and I think it's very much in line with what Mary is saying, is that my concern is, well, let's just start with banning. My concern with banning is, is that I don't like banning things that the population of the state of Ohio and the city of Bryan didn't feel as though it should be banned. So that's, that's the first thing on the ban piece. As it relates to the limiting piece, that's more in line with my general philosophy and thought, especially if we have to, if we, if we don't do that before December 7th and wait and then have to accept whatever the state says. That doesn't seem wise to me. I would prefer that we locally establish basically things, things like, the same thing we did with DORA, quite frankly. Establish the number of operators, the size, the level, the geographic parameters. I would just as soon be able to do that locally than wait until the state. And my understanding of what Mary was asking was, is if we establish that and the state establishes something later that says, "No, we're going to go this route", we can, we can challenge that a little bit on the basis that you told us that this is what was going to happen. Are you now reneging on your thoughts? So barring them reneging, it seems as though we have more local control if we take time to get input from folks as to how we want to limit it based on size. Level three is an example. A level three operator is a 70-by-70-square-foot building. And once again, I've talked to some people. Their response was more moral than, than legal. It's not that at this point. It's no more of a moral issue than alcohol at this point in the state of Ohio, not federally, but in the state of Ohio. So if we want to look at this to have some control at this point, it would seem to me to make some sense that we establish some of those parameters based on input from the community. Where do you want to, especially businesses? You current, right now, it's, the way it's written, you can't have a dispensary within 500 feet. Maybe we, maybe we want to make it 1,000 feet of a public, which is schools, churches, playgrounds, et cetera. So I would be more interested in us establishing our limits, if that makes some sense, than, than waiting. And I'm not in favor of the first option, which is to proceed with the ban ordinance that we have before us. That would not be, to me, that goes against a personal, and I'm not on a soapbox here, but a personal democratic principle. The people have spoke. I'm not going to say, "The heck with you. I don't want to listen to that. We're going to ban it." I don't believe I was elected to do that when people vote on what they want based on what the city needs, yes, but not on what the people want. So I am not in favor of the ban. I am in favor of limiting. I am not in favor of waiting. That's where I'm at with this after the last four days of review.
With the fact that the dispensaries can only do cash-only, does that mean they're not charging tax, income tax, then?
I mean, our legal counsel did say that the majority of these people are cash-only, and so it's very hard to track what kind of tax you would ever get from them.
Right. And the reason that they are is because the, oh, you've, I figured I'd word this in a second. It makes sense. Many financial institutes don't want to because it's governed by the federal government.
Yeah, the federal government could seize...
And the federal government can seize their money because of the fact it's illegal and by the federal law. So...
Sure, that's a potential.
Could the, could the federal law come to us and say, "Okay, we're going to seize that tax money", eventually? I mean, I know that hasn't happened in the other state, but...
I don't know.
You know, it'd be a great way to get rid of the federal deficit if you did that, you know?
And I don't, I don't know that they've done that in any of the other states that have passed it. But again, as you know, you've got another ordinance to see as well, and that doesn't even have to be what you decide. It's, the ban was first because there was already a moratorium which banned it. And then I also felt you guys needed more options than just a total go-for-it-or-not. So that's why the second ordinance was, was produced as a talking point. Everything I'm hearing from Ohio Municipal League, everything I'm hearing from our legal counsel is, whatever you do needs to be passed by December 7th.
That's what I thought.
Unfortunately. And so I did talk to Mr. Hoopie about, you know, maybe we next week set a special meeting after Mark's had time to review comments and change an ordinance. Maybe we table these two and, I keep talking about one that John hasn't read yet. He'll have to do that. But, and start over, or maybe you guys have more discussion. But time is somewhat limited. It will have to be passed by our next official meeting that first week in December.
And I do think it's important because I've had a couple people approach me already with, I don't think we ought to do... You, as I told them, this does not, you can still have personal growth and use. You can grow up, six plants per, I think, six plants per household adult or something like, whatever it is. It's six plants. You can have six plants of your own and smoke it. So you're not going to say, "We're not going to have, like prohibition days. We're not going to have any alcohol available at all."
It's just a dispensary.
The dispensaries, the cultivators, and the operators, yeah.
So I don't want people thinking that...
Correct.
If, if we did ban it, you can ban it entirely because you can't.
They can still, they can still partake. They just can't.
And they can, I mean residential, like, they can grow up their property too.
So if they're going to grow it, they're going to smoke it.
Right.
So I need, we need to know what we can and can't control, I guess is my thought.
I agree with John. We don't ban it. We limit it.
I think we just need more information. How are you going to do that, though?
Well, I don't know. We need to come up with a number.
Because you can't only put a radius around this downtown area and say this here, but if you're outside that radius, you can still do it, and you're inside the city limits. Is that what you're saying, or...
Well, the next ordinance is about the C3, and I don't want it in the C3.
No, I agree with you there.
You know, I mean, I don't, I don't think any business owners do as well.
Yeah.
So we keep it outside the C3. You know, I just don't want it to, to Bryan to end up being like Camden or Morenci where there's, you know, eight dispensaries, you know, in a row. It's just... No, I think we need to come up with like a number like two.
Yeah.
You know, or something like that. It's got to be, you know, a certain amount away from, you know, like John said, not 500 feet, but maybe 1,000 feet.
But then how are you going to pick and choose what dispensary comes in?
Well, the state will pick that. The state will license them.
That's it, okay.
Right?
Yeah. You still have to go through the licensing process. There's nothing different between this and the liquor control that the state has right now.
Okay.
That you still have to be licensed. I think one of the issues tonight is about a transfer of a license, unless I'm incorrect. So I mean, it's, it's going to be regulated. I think the point behind this, if you talk to Mike, to some of the government officials, is that they felt as though that they wanted to go this road because they could, they felt as though they could control it better than it's currently being controlled. I would still like to hear from business, community, and law enforcement as to their, as to their thoughts. And that's what we have over the next, what's, December 7th?
Not very far away.
Yeah.
So, but we need to communicate that because I feel as though there's a reason the state is giving such a short window.
That was actually the ballot language that the initiative group put up, was 30 days after the election it would take effect. However, they did allow for our state legislature and the Department of Commerce to create the licensing rules. And I, everything I'm hearing is it's going to take them at least nine months to do that.
Yes.
I will say, you know, we were really quick to put this agenda on the website. For people that are paying attention, there was an article in the paper about the mayor's meeting that most of you saw, where that was discussed a little bit. And then also on Saturday, it was the front page council potentially banning marijuana use. So I, I do think if people are choosing to look at things and pay attention, they're going to know that we're discussing this.
Sure.
I did talk to a few of the downtown groups, and they had concerns about it being in the C3. There's been a lot of investment in our downtown.
Understood.
And there's a little bit of, you know, we need to make sure that we're honoring property rights, but also honoring voter rights, and it's a really gray area right now, if that makes sense.
All the more to my point, which is, we, we limit. How do we know nine months from now that's not an option?
Right.
And the answer is you don't. So we may be forced to do, we may be forced to do C3 stuff. If, if we can submit our limitations now, I think we're going to be in a better position. It's unfortunate, and I appreciate, I'm sometimes too cynical about the state. I appreciate that input, that it was originally written up for 30 days. I think that's a very short time period to get input. But I would still, and I agree, it's been out there, but I'd like to get some input from, more from businesses, as you have already done, more from law enforcement, and more from the general community.
Do you want to speak to anything, Captain, or would you rather wait?
I can.
Okay, hold on up. So when you asked if you were presenting anything, the answer is yes, no.
I see that now. Well, thank you for letting me talk, and good evening. So I've had, I have 26 years of law enforcement experience. Within that 26 years, I had about 12 years as a detective for the city of Napoleon. And within that was a lot of what I specialized in was also narcotics. You, and working with the man unit, the multi-area narcotics unit that's, we are a part of. During that time, we saw where Michigan allowed the dispensaries. And what was happening to Ohio was at that time, and still continues, is we saw an increase in drug trafficking with marijuana. People were going to Michigan, buying large bulk amounts, and bringing them down to Ohio. It just made it easier for these people to bring more into Ohio and then dispense it here and resell it. That goes towards adults and juveniles. Just last year, or over the summer, we had a adult male go to Michigan and purchase edibles that contained THC and brought them back down, and we had him selling to our high school kids. So all I'm saying is, the dispensaries, they're going to make it easier for people who are going to resell and distribute this, these products to those that should not have them. On top of that, you're going to see an increase in foot traffic wherever you put these things. And we know from past experience, not everyone from the foot traffic that goes to this are the kind of people you want in your area. So depending on where you put them, residential areas, or like you said, C3 maybe, what kind of people are you going to get in those areas? And are the other businesses going to be upset because of what that happens? Also on top of that, there is a smell. I mean, we've all smelled it. It's more common than what it's ever been. Now you're putting a large amount in one area. How is that going to affect that area? Are business owners going to be upset because of the smell? I think that was it.
Do we have any, do we have any information about how many people traveled to Michigan and came back? Because it's the same people that would be buying locally, right?
As in, do we know how many people do it? I don't have exact numbers, sir.
Yeah.
I can tell you my personal experience over my years. I've seen it. I've seen it quite often. Coming to Bryan PD, we've had them. I've seen them. Our officers are stopping cars and pulling bulk amounts of marijuana. I mean, like I said, I, we just got one where an adult was selling edibles to high school kids.
No, I'm aware of that. If we, actually, I knew the people. What I'm concerned about is the, the logic. If the, if the person, if the person is driving up to Michigan, why would they stop? They're going to continue, right?
No, they're buying it in Michigan and coming back.
That's my point.
Then bringing it back down.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Let me be more clear. If a Bryan individual goes to Michigan, purchases some kind of form of marijuana and brings it back, why would that stop if we banned it?
The, what it does is, it makes it red, more, they don't have to travel to Michigan anymore. Now they'll just buy it here, and then they'll distribute it out from there.
If you don't ban it, like he's saying, you were talking about limiting it. So if you limit it, you're just going to bring those folks that are going to Michigan. They're just going to stay local.
When you pull somebody over, do you have a way of telling whether they're under the influence of THC or whether it's alcohol?
So when, when we pull someone over, we're looking for indicators that show us that they are unable to drive or under the influence of something. Obviously, with alcohol, we can smell it.
Right.
With marijuana, we could smell it. We will run them through a series of tests that would help us to indicate whether or not they're under the influence of something. On top of that, we would have to also look at their driving. What did they do that caused the traffic, or the traffic infraction that we made the stop for? So it's not like one particular thing that says, "I know you're under marijuana influence", is we would have to look at it as the large scale of all these indicators to put it together. We would say, "Yes, you are in fact under the influence of something. I don't smell alcohol, so it's something else." And then from there, that's when we, if we would choose to make the arrest, we would have you take a test, like a urine test.
A urine test?
Yes.
Okay. But there's nothing they can blow into or...
No, ma'am.
Okay. Someone had told me that, that's why I wanted to ask you that question.
Yeah, it's, it's a common question, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
So if, if we were to ban it in the city of Bryan, this is a what-if, okay? People are still going to be able to go to, let's say, Eden, if they make it, okay, and buy it and bring it back, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So why is that any different than from going up to Michigan and getting it and bringing it back?
It is not. What, what I was trying to show was, there's a series of issues that you were looking at. It's not just the fact that they can go buy somewhere else. It's the increased foot traffic that you're going to get in that area. It's the smell that you're going to get in that area.
Okay.
It's, it's like I was explaining earlier, it's not just one thing. It's a totality of a lot of things that you have to take into account. If you said you're only going to let one or two in, where are we going to put it? How are we going to run it? That kind of stuff. What are, how are businesses going to react to it? I guess that's what I'm trying to...
It's not going to smell like Spanglers, is it?
I tell you, it's a big difference coming from Napoleon to Bryan because Campbell's does not smell like Spanglers.
Not quite as sweet over there, is it?
No, it is, is not.
I think there's a lot of questions to be answered with this. It's just...
Yeah. I'll just point out some points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm going to ask you, and it is a first reading, but we have to end up with kind of one of these as our draft. One of them, if you could either decide to vote yes or no on, and then we make the draft the other one, would be helpful, I think, moving forward if you're comfortable with that. So the first one we're dealing with is a total ban. And I'm not sure I'm hearing that from any of you.
I want more information.
Yeah, well, it's, I don't know how we're going to get the information by December 7th either. Like, I...
Do we need to bring the next one on the table at this point?
I, I, how do you, do you want them to table this one, and then you can read the next one? Would that be helpful? I, I, how do you, do you want them to table this one and then you can read the next one? Would that be helpful?
Well, I don't think it needs to be tabled, but you can.
Have to on the floor.
Let it lie after just having the first reading. You don't do, you don't do the, you don't do the motion to, you know, waive the three readings.
Okay.
So it just goes, it just has the first reading.
So we just need to vote on this one and then?
Well, they can either vote it down or just not vote at all.
Not vote at all.
So you can just ask him to number and read the next ordinance.
You need a motion to not vote at all on that or just don't?
You don't have to. You can just add, the council president can ask him to number and read the next ordinance if you so choose.
Without the motion to waive the three readings, it's just had its first reading, period.
Do we have a motion? I'm not seeing a motion, so let's move on to the next item, number four, which is ordinance. John, please number and read it.
Ordinance number 53, 2023. An ordinance prohibiting adult-use cannabis operators, adult-use cultivators and adult-use dispensaries from operating within the C three zoning district in the city of Brian.
Okay, counsel. Again, this is something for discussion on the C three district. Brian, do you want to just tell them where those boundaries are? Do you mind coming up? Do you know offhand? I didn't tell them there was a pop quiz. How far does it go down? Is it, does it stop at Lester's or Four Seasons?
It stops at Lester's. It's basically the downtown square and probably about a block each direction. So like, yeah, there's the C three core, which is the downtown business district, which is just around the square. And then the actual C three is about one block farther. Pretty close to the Dora district. That's fairly close, but not exactly. I could probably pull a map up.
I didn't, I didn't ask you to pull one up, but I'm not sure I have it. Would that help you? Do you guys want to, I mean, does that help the conversation or no?
I'd like to see it as a total package versus separating it out.
Yeah, I, I fancy that.
It's, you know, Judy wants more information. It gives her time to get more information. I don't see voting on one and the other without the other.
This keeps it from going downtown.
Yeah, and I'm, I know where I'm, I know where I'm going with the ordinance is period, but it, since, since there was a general consensus that we wanted to, I don't know what you call it, kick the can down. Since we wanted to wait and get more information, then we ought to wait and get more information on both, in my mind, because one may affect the other.
I think it's just like with the police standing up and giving us their side of the story. I think that helps us make a decision. You know, the more information we can get, the better decision we're going to make. Is it going to be the right decision that everybody's going to be happy with? Uh-uh. That's not going to happen. But if we can make the most intelligent decision and just to all of a sudden vote on it, just to vote on it.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily asking, I just didn't know if you wanted those boundaries defined in the C three for you, just for your information.
So the C three would be the gray areas here. So it's all of Main Street from Trevitt down to, let me back out a little bit. All of, so my hand is on Main Streets, from all of Main Street, all the way down from Trevitt to almost Pierce. And then it goes on High Street West to Portland, which would be just short of the hospital, so would include the old Myros Building. And then east it goes to Cherry Street, which would be the funeral homes there on the corner. And then basically that circle around. So about three blocks north and south and two blocks east and west of the downtown. And the C three core is the black box, which is in the middle, which is just the one block radius around the square. And that has different zoning requirements within the city as you can do, it's more restrictive in the core as what it is just the actual C three itself. So, and I don't think, I don't think there's any other C three zoning districts in the city. No, just around there.
Right.
It's C two everywhere else.
Well, once again, I would like to see a package that, that eliminates the C three piece along with other issues that we limit versus ban. That's my only thought.
So that's, that's a question I have for you guys. Did I just interrupt someone? Sorry.
No, I was just going to ask, so you're okay with a dispensary downtown?
I did not say that.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I did not say that. What I said was, we are separating a coin, tails and heads. I don't see that, when I vote on something, I'd like to see the whole and not a part.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. If you want me, I can vote right now on both.
I'm, I'm, John, I'm trying to figure out how that package looks with, with all of your, your conversations. So no, I think he was okay with C three being in that.
Yes.
Now, you know.
That's part of the limit.
That's part of the limit. Do you want to go further? Do you want to go, you know, you could do industrial use only, you could do multi-use. You guys can, can talk about that.
Right.
We've got the zoning map up. But I had a question, and it may have been Jim and both John that said, you know, limit to two. So is that two operators plus two cultivators plus two dispensaries would be the limit you would want to see in that next ordinance?
Well, I need to have a better understanding of that. There's definitions that are already put out as it relates to dispensary, people, operator, issues, et cetera. So I don't know, I don't know if I can answer that right now. Because once again, I'm looking at wanting to limit. I think if you limit the, the head, the head, the, the rest of the body kind of follows. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't, until I know more about, what, how can we limit this in a manner that is in balance with what the people said they wanted with also what's best for the city of Brian, which is basically the balance, I don't know. And that's why I'd like to see a package in the next 10 days.
And I don't know what you mean by that, because I don't know.
I've given specifics and I will reiterate those specifics.
Okay, hold on, just for a minute, because one of your specifics was two, I'm trying to clarify if you want two of everything or six. That was one of my questions.
And I don't know at this point.
Okay, and then you threw out a thousand feet from schools and churches. Was there another qualifier in there? Was it just school and churches?
No.
Okay.
The qualifier, it's public entity. I believe what I put was et cetera, based on what the state is stating. What they said, what they stated was the definition included churches, parks, schools. Parks, schools, public property. I think that was it. So whatever their definition is, that's the 500 foot. Do we want to keep it at 500 foot or do we want to say a thousand? And I'm like, Mary, I don't know what that means in terms of how, what that can encompass. I am not in favor, answer your question directly, of a downtown issue. But in the same sense, I don't want to vote on that part until I have a better picture of the whole as to what we want to do for limitation. Does that make sense?
Yes. My question is though, how do I build that?
We build it.
Well, right, but you guys can't, like, how are you going to get that information to me?
We can have, can we not meet?
Yeah, we would have to give, we would have to give notice to the paper and do the normal thing that we do for a reading, yeah.
Yeah, and it's an open meeting. I have no problem with that.
And you don't want to do that right now? Because you need more time?
Well, I, I, I can do it right now. I could, I could actually do it right now, except there's a couple of things that I'm not 100% sure of
Okay.
in terms of numbers, one of them, numbers of dispensaries. I don't know, I was thinking of just a couple. The problem with waiting in the state, what if they come down and say a municipality of anywhere from five to 10,000 has to have at least three dispensaries? You know, I don't know what they're going to do in nine months.
Yeah, I can't imagine they would do that, but they, I mean, they could with liquor they give you per population. But they could also say up to, right? Because the other piece that I want to remind you with liquor is that's, that still comes to council when there's a change in a permit.
Right.
And you can ask for a hearing in Columbus to say, you know what, six is enough and they want seven and we've got one open, but we don't feel that we need, they may still grant it, but we have the ability to have that conversation. So I don't see why this would be different, but I have no idea how they're going to write it. And, and that is the problem is no one has a crystal ball in this room. I guess my hope was for these readings, which is why I also put on the agenda first reading only, is that nobody passes anything. You can let them both lie or you can shut one down because you absolutely hate it. But that we kind of build some kind of model for another ordinance to take place for the next meeting. And you can discuss that too. I mean, I did, I did tell you, we may have to set something next week.
Well, I think if everyone goes back and puts their questions down or put some, like some of the parameters that I established, we can meet and all five of us discuss those and say, yeah, we're, we certainly, well, it's going to be public, so we could. I mean, we can vote maybe at that time, but I would like to hear everyone's kind of thoughts
Yeah.
on that, on that piece.
And to go back to the mayor's point, I want to know the difference between a cannabis operator, adult-use cultivators and adult-use dispensary. I know what the adult-use dispensaries are, more than likely that's
Store.
the store. What are the other two? And, you know, what do we actually?
Adult-use cannabis operator means a level one adult-use cultivator, that is to grow.
Okay.
A level two adult-use cultivator, a level three adult-use cultivator and an adult, an adult-use processor, which is to manufacture.
Okay.
And an adult-use dispensary, which is to sell. So it's, it's grow, manufacture and sell. And those are adult cannabis operators, level one. What I was suggesting to ans, we can do it right now. What, to answer you specifically, Mayor, is that I was suggesting level three, no more than two.
Which is your dispensary?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's two, no more than two. Now, does that mean we should vote on that tonight? They haven't even probably given any thought, so I think it's a little premature.
You're talking about two, two stores to sell it in Brian?
Yes, in the city limits.
Yes, it's all, and within the city limits, there's a level three. And, and the number's irrelevant. It's, it's, I'm okay with one. The problem is, is what is that going to do? And that needs more discussion. But level one is not, it's too broad, it's too big for me. Level two is too big. Level three is a 5,000 square foot building, which is, I think 70 by, sure, 4,900, 70 by 70 building. That's not that big of a building to dispense a certain amount of marijuana. So do we want one or, do we want level three? Do we want one or two of those? Where do we want them? Sounds like not, not in the downtown district. I don't think anyone's agreeing to that, C three area. So I think we already have some specific parameters. But then what about the, the, where at in terms of how, how close to a school, church, public entity?
Okay, so I just updated the map here. Now, it's, it's a little tough to see because it's so large, but I turned off all the residential zoning districts, which you can't put a retail sale business in there anyways. I turned off the C three for the core, or the C three and the core. So basically what we have, I'll flash the C ones on and off. We got a little bit around Circle K down south and a little bit out on West High Street.
So C one is a business?
That's C one, commercial one. So a retail establishment would be allowed in these areas that are flickering right now.
Okay.
We could do a C two, which, you see these areas, that's another form of commercial that's allowed. And that's, we would allow a retail type establishment within those areas also. We also have I one, which is light industrial, which would be the South Industrial Park. And then we have I two, which would be the North Industrial Park, Titan Tire and areas like that. So, and then this purple area is a multi-use. That's kind of a zoning buffer between residential and commercial that can kind of go both ways. So you think out here, you know, East High Street, you know, it's around Mintec and there's some commercial, there's some residential, there's some industrial. So what's on this map right now is the only place zoning wise that you would be able to have a retail establishment. And our zoning code may not even allow a retail establishment without planning commission approval in an I two, a heavy industrial.
Oh, okay.
So we can almost turn that off because that's not, I mean, in heavy industrial, that's what we want, heavy industrial. You're not going to have a small retail sale, so we can almost turn that off.
So it's just C one, and did you say some parts of C two?
I have C one and C two as shown. I turned off the C three, which is the downtown core.
So C, C one is the brown area there to the far left.
C one, yep, yep, yep.
And C, that's, that's going up and down. What's the C two again? I'm so sorry.
C two is blue, the darker blue.
Ah ha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a little, I know it's tough to see, John, but over here on the left.
No, 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 that's, that's, yeah, that's okay. That's helpful.
It's purple to us, it's blue to Brian.
It's blue on the screen, it's purple on that screen. So, and we got what, Magenta here? So Magenta is an MU, which is between residential and commercial. It's just a multi-use. So, you know, those areas there, a retail type establishment would be allowed. The purple color, I'm sorry, it's blue on my screen, that is C two, commercial.
It's very helpful.
And C one would be out, let's just say Pizza Hut.
Yes.
West High Street.
Right.
We've also got down in Circle K, that area, there's a couple down there that are zoned that way. And there's one little spot out on Center Street, that's probably, I call it the old gun shop. What does Matt and Bill have business there?
Eric's Ice Cream.
Yeah, Eric's Ice Cream. That's also the same there.
Close to the schools.
So, so these are the areas that zoning wise, a retail establishment could be put in. So if you're talking about 500 feet, 1,000 feet from a school, most of those, it's all residential. So it's kind of irrelevant, in my opinion, on whether it's 500 versus 1,000 away from schools or parks.
Well, how close is the school to Eric's?
More than 500 feet.
I think it's a thousand.
I'm, I'm using a thousand.
Okay, yeah, a thousand.
It's more than a thousand?
It's not a thousand from Wesley Church.
But Wesley Church is across the street, so that.
Nor is it from Merrick Park.
Right, well, that's, that's where I'm getting with this is the limit. And I have no problem publicly or whatever. The, in fact, I appreciate the public doing it. The, the, I was thinking more of the peripheral.
Right, but zoning wise, these colored areas are all you're allowed. Zoning wise, is the only areas you're allowed to have a retail establishment.
So I'm, I'm thinking the, what was it, was it the C two industrial, that's not heavy industrial?
Yeah, I turned off, I turned off heavy industrial. Light industrial is this yellow.
I one. Show them.
So something on the periphery and having like one or two.
Yeah, like, yeah, like, yeah, C one is.
Yeah, it kind of looks like C one.
C one, you know, is that something you want to take out?
Yeah. Look at, look at the north, the North Industrial Park.
Yeah, that's I two. That'd be green.
What'd you say?
I'm sorry, he was asking North Industrial Park. That'd be the bright green, where my hand is.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Which is where an operator or cultivator would have to go.
Well, if somebody would want to come in and ask you to cultivate.
Right.
You know, set up shop.
Yeah.
But this map, I turned the residential off at least, so at least you guys know what's allowable.
Can I get some clarification? What's, let's say the, the square, how many feet is that? I'm trying to get it, maybe a 500 versus 1,000, what we're talking about.
Square is probably what, 250 by 250, 200 by 200?
That, that helps me.
Each residential block is 32264, it's about 400 foot long, each block is maybe 350.
So it'd be about two blocks, it'd be, okay, 1,000. All right, that helps a lot. Thank you.
That's why I was thinking, I made that up, the one or two and the thousand. We can, we can establish it at whatever number and make it 1,500 or 2,000. But that's what helps is to show what's even available. If it's, if it's, if there's only like two or three spots that are available and it's definitely out on a periphery.
And, and this is where, you know, I, I think the mayor's asking for your guidance on if you're going to limit, where do you limit? What are you going to limit? And so here's areas where, again, where you could put the building. Our office could take the zoning map and we could do a 500 foot radius around our, hopefully we can determine all the churches, schools and everything. And we can maybe get you another drawing that would show you what areas would be blocked out.
At the next meeting?
Yeah, at the next meeting.
That's what I was trying to get some.
That would be very helpful. And that would be C two?
I'm, I guess the mayor's looking for guidance and I would take her guidance. If, if you guys say, we would like to restrict it to C two, C one, I two and I one and MU, like what we have here, we can put a thousand foot radius, if that's what you're saying, around churches, schools, parks, public properties, whatever the list would be. And then we can show you what's left.
I'm not real sure of the industrial zoning thing made a lot of sense to me.
I would say for cultivating.
Oh, okay.
You know, you think.
If you were to allow cultivating, that would be where it would have to go.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, put a bunch of greenhouses and sell gas, sell electric, sell water.
Sure.
It's not going to smell.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I feel like the direction that we're headed is, or that we would like to see is more like. Yeah, I, I feel like the direction that we're headed is, or that we would like to see is more like ordinance 53 with restrictions in other areas within the, the city limits that, with the C-one, C-two, I-one, and what was the other one?
I-two and
I-two and MU.
You.
Basically, the map we have up there right now.
So what I have, Brian, make sure I have this right, C-one, C-two, C-three, I-one, I-two, MU.
I believe so. Not R-one, two, or three, and not
Not C-
The C-three.
Not C-
Not the downtown C-three.
Well, I did put C-three in because we're going to want to limit that, like they, you did kind of talk about wanting to not have it in the downtown. Right, so
Yeah, but if you don't put it in there, that does eliminate it, right? Am I missing something?
I gotcha, yep.
Yep.
So I need to write allowable in
Yes.
With, right now, we'll have you do a map of 1,000 feet from schools, churches, public properties, parks, up to two dispensaries. We don't know where we want to go with operators and cultivators.
We need to be in control of limiting this.
I would like to see five and a thousand, 500 and
Five, just two different maps?
Five, yep, just two.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
I do, I do seriously have a question that I think I need to ask someone, and I don't know that anyone in the room will know, but do you know with a greenhouse for, you know, if they would do a cultivator, does that have a smell in the aroma? Because we've always been very careful with that North Industrial Park not to contaminate Spangler candy.
I don't know the specific rules, but an air discharge is, there is an Ohio EPA permit
Okay.
for odors for air discharge, so
Okay.
there would be some restrictions on it. I don't know
That wouldn't be the cultivator, though, would it? That's the growing part. Wouldn't the smell come from the manufacturing part?
No, cultivation would be a lot smellier with that, though.
Would it?
You can absolutely treat an air discharge the same as a water discharge. There, there are ways to deal with that.
So there's marijuana gases?
Yeah, just the smell of the growing plant, I mean.
I mean, you smell tassels on sweet corn. You smell alfalfa smells different.
Oh, I hate alfalfa, but yes.
Same thing. Different, like, your roses, your different flowers have different odors, so every, everything that grows, grass smells different.
Okay.
Actual green grass, so.
Sure. No, that would be helpful to have that map, 500 to 1,000?
Yeah, do them both.
500 to 1,000?
Let's see where we're at. Yep.
But again, as where we're at, not the C-three and not the residential districts, just these areas here.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
We're on the same page.
Yep, 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 yep. And, and once again, my general proposal thought is it'd be level-three. Why? Because it's the smallest production that you can have. So at the same time, it's allowing some potential business growth at, what's it, 36% tax as to whatever they claim
Yeah.
the revenue is. So if they sell $1 million, it's
They don't have to claim it.
Yeah, yeah. They, they claim 500,000, it's still 36%.
Do you have anything further on, on these?
Well, is this going to muster minutes up if I ask them to set a special meeting?
Because we need to have
So, do you guys know what you have going on Monday, the 27th, which is in a week?
A week
A week from today, the 27th?
Like, six in the morning?
Oh, that's my not favorite time.
Just kidding.
Six-thirty, seven.
You have school, you can't.
The building opens at 8:30 a.m.
The 27th?
Yes.
And what time?
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. I
My only option is after hours.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
After hours, like
Like, after five or six, you mean?
4:30, 5:00, what?
Yeah, we could do that.
Which
Yeah, which one?
Which one?
Oh, 4:30 is fine.
Does that work for you, Mary? Can you get out?
Yeah, I can get out.
How about you, Rick?
Yep, I should be
You done bus driving by then?
Little, little Johnny can do it.
Where, here?
November 27th at 4:30?
At 4:30. Yes, it will be here. So if you wouldn't mind, I would ask someone to make a motion to schedule a special meeting for Monday, November 27th at 4:30 p.m. in council chambers.
So we don't have to do anything with the ordinance
You're going to let that lie, too?
52, 53 at this point?
We should just let that lie, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just going to let it lie, and we're going to bring another ordinance in a week to you that's not those two.
That works. I'll entertain a motion for the special meeting.
I will make a motion.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
And then, Brian, you can get maps by then. I know, I know we've got
Between Doug Poole and I, he mentioned he might have a shorter cut for me, so
Okay.
we'll get you something.
In the meantime, I think we all, council, need to think about other, other limits. Like I said, the, the level, I'm recommending three, this, which is, dictates the size. And we're going to look at the demographic or the geographic parameters, but maybe there's others that we need to look at. I, I would also suggest that this, that's not, I repeat, does not change smoking prohibitions that have preceded this, be it marijuana or tobacco. You still can't smoke in certain public entities either. That, you know what I'm saying? So I don't know if that needs, does that need to be part of the ordinance, too, do you think?
Mark said no, because the state ballot measure back in, I think it was '06, took care of smoking. It wasn't just cigarettes, and that it was just smoking, smoking ban.
My only other thing is, I would like to hear from people in Bryan. I've heard one person stop me in church yesterday, and give us your opinion on this. We need some verification. I know we had the vote, but we still need to know why you voted certain ways. Is there a particular reason? And like I said, it was so helpful to hear from you, some of the reasons that you gave us. That's what we need. We need feedback, people.
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Obviously, I'm, obviously, I'm not the city attorney. I just have a question. I'm not, I would question as to whether, however this ultimately, ultimately plays out, that you can set a number. There can be two, there can be five, there can be zero. My knowledge of the hist-, of other issues like this has been that you've got to do the zoning and that 500 or 1,000-foot in such a way as to, by default, you can only have so many. But I don't know if you can actually say we have a limit of three.
It's one and the same. It's six, one half dozen, another. If I set a limitation where there's only can be two, then there's going to only be two, isn't there? So I'm not being sarcastic about it, but that was, that's the intent. The intent is to limit it. So, can, can, your point is, can you specifically state, which I do not know that either, can you specifically state no more than two in the city of Bryan? I don't know that. I don't care. We're going to establish the parameters of which
Whatever you have to do to
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
That was my thought, John, does that make some?
Thank you.
Oh, oh.
Did you do roll call for that motion? John, did you do roll call for that motion?
I did.
Is there anything further?
I think we're on to hearing of public concerns.
Okay. Before we move on, I do want to say thank you to everybody that that was and I think that we're going to end up with a good, good ordinance at the end. Believe it or not, we are finally to hearing of public concerns, and so, Mr. Cox.
Steve Cox, Huntington Drive. A number of months ago, I was before council, and I asked whether the Eastland Estates complex was going to be repaved next year. I was told the decision on repaving would be available in November, and it's November. So I'm asking, will it be, the Eastland Estates be repaved?
I don't remember saying that it would be repaved in November, was it?
Well, we said budget times are coming up in November, but I wanted to do core samples of the road, but based on Mr. Cox's study of the neighborhood, most of the people wanted the road left the way it was, so I didn't budget anything for next year for that. Because he, I thought he'd done a survey, and most everybody said they were happy with the way it was. And I don't believe Mr. Cox wanted me to drill holes in the street, to do core samples, to find out what was down there, so I did not do any design on that. I put it on the back burner.
Oh. Point of clarification, we wanted repaving, not throw tar down, leave gravel on it.
I can't repave a chip-seal road without doing core samples, and he specifically said you didn't want core samples taken from your road. You didn't want holes in there. So I did not do anything further on that, because I can't do a proper design to determine how much asphalt's needed without taking a core sample and determining how much stone and existing asphalt bases there. So I did not do any design on it, and I did not budget anything for next year.
Okay. Do the core samples have to be out of the center of the road?
They take them random places, some in the wheel tracks, some in the center. There'd probably be 12, maybe more, four-inch diameter holes that we core down in, then we fill it with cement or bentonite to fill it back up.
What sort of timeframe do you have from the time that you drilled to the time that they were covered up again?
Oh, it's the same day. But I did not budget money, I did not propose any budget monies for that road for next year.
Okay. As to my question, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Cox. Anyone else for public concerns? See, no one coming forward, so we'll move on to the next item. It is an ordinance. John, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 54, 2023, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for, for 2024 to Plaski Township.
Good evening, council. The next three ordinances are all somewhat related. We're up for two annual contracts, Jefferson and Plaski. And we have the biannual for the county covering the hillside property in the Updike Park. Each, I asked that you take each of these separate, obviously, because we need an ordinance to allow that, the mayor to enter into a contract. The increases in these are just under 5%. They're still well below what it costs for us to operate. However, it's not an undue amount, and I have notified the townships and the commissioners of our intended cost for the next contract.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Jim, or John?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
And I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes. Item number seven is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 55, 2023, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for 2024 to Jefferson Township.
Same as I said with the last one.
Same thing.
Yes.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
And Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
John?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes. Item number eight is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 56, 2023, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for Hillside Country Living, Optic Park, and the Williams County Park Building for years 24 and, 2024 and 2025.
This is a two-year contract, which is what we've been doing with, for the commissioners for a number of years.
A motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
And move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Next item is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 52, 2023, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Economic Development Transfer Form, TREX, for a liquor permit to be transferred to the owners of Zazarax LLC located at 116 West High Street in Bryan, Ohio.
Mr. Swanson, would you like to come talk to council, or would you like me to share?
I'm Zazarax, that's an LLC. There are no liquor, D5 liquor license quotas available in Bryan, Ohio, but through a new state law that's a couple of years old, you can transfer from another municipality or another area in Ohio through a process called TREX, and so we propose to do that. I have a liquor license from a restaurant that went out of business in Toledo in safe, safekeeping, safeholding, it's a legal term, I guess. And the first step in getting the Liquor Control Board in Columbus to, to even consider this is they need a resolution by the city council, signed by the mayor, and to, to declare my operation downtown an economic development project. And I've tried to look through the laws, and I don't see anything that really defines what an economic development project is. So I guess it's up to you to decide whether it is or not. I can answer any questions about what we're doing and what our plans are to help you make your decision, if you have any.
Did, I'm, I have just a more, I'm, I appreciate what you do, period, and what you're doing for the city of Bryan. That, that, just, would you happen to know, is it quicker, would it be, is this a quicker process than what you were said? That you can go and get a, an additional permit? Does that take more time than this?
So, he doesn't have any other option.
Oh, he doesn't
Because all of the liquor permits that are available through our population quota, through the Department of Commerce Liquor Control, are already being used.
And you can't appeal to them to get another one?
This is the only way.
Ah, okay.
Well, we could, here's the other option.
There's some very astute ways, you know, hotel operation, there's some things like this.
But for what, for what his purposes, the other option is, and the city of Defiance did this a couple of years ago, there's a way to get more liquor permits in your community, but so much of your dollars sold in your restaurant need to be towards food purchase only, and I don't believe they've been successful in that kind of percentage amount. And so a lot of people have tried and not succeeded. So I certainly, if, if it's a program that I'm not sure works in Northwest Ohio, I don't think we want to introduce that here at the risk of people's investment. Mr. Swanson contacted me probably a year ago about this conversation. The city in the past has gotten questions about TREX. It is my understanding that those were just never brought to council. But with that being said, I do think, because I've talked to our legal counsel, Mark Fischel, quite a bit about it. Mr. Swanson is correct that there seems to be limited parameters around who is defining TREX. It's basically the legislative body and, and the mayor having that authorization to determine that. So what I do want to count, caution you on is, we could now get an influx. In fact, there's another one on my desk, a TREX application, that we're waiting on something else for, of this request. And at what point does the state of Ohio say, okay, Brian, you've got way too many, and we're done? So I do think that there should be some conversation, and I know we've had a lot of conversation tonight, so I'm sorry to do this to you again. But I had called President Hoopie to discuss this with him, and we kind of bounced around, like, obviously, Mr. Swanson has put a significant dollar investment into this building. He's going to create some staff, whether that's a requirement you choose or don't is fine. But my recommendation, and I think Mr. Hoopie's conversation was, to limit it to dining and entertainment within the city limits, so that we aren't just getting a bunch of these applications for things that maybe aren't bringing people here for more than 10 minutes. I think, well, first, his restaurant versus a gas station.
Well, that, no, I understand
Yeah.
Dave's, I don't, the, the other would be like a gas station, would ask for a transfer
Well, they, they could, absolutely. There's, there's a business, I think everybody's heard about it. There's a golf simulation business that's going into one of Isaac's property, and she has inquired as well, which I would think would be under entertainment, where you go and you hang out with your friends and you play golf by the simulator and have a can of beer, or whatever it is. You know, that's something you guys could determine, whether that's economic development or not. Do you think a gas station being bought by a new owner, maybe they're putting some investment in? Do you think that is, you know, fitting within that? Do you think that is, you know, fitting within that?
Do we have to have limitations on it? Can't we just do it on each individual basis?
No, you can, case by case basis. My recommendation to you is dining and entertainment because I think that focuses on what we've been doing as a community. But yes, you can.
I don't know if I would want to limit it, though. I think I would rather do it each one on an individual basis.
Oh, well, I'm just going to commit to you that when I get a TREX application and it's ready to come to council, I'm going to bring it to you.
Yeah.
But what I would tell you though is if you just keep saying yes to all of them, at some point, the state's going to take notice and say, no more, we're done. And then, and then we don't have this avenue. And we're kind of out.
Without disclosing business secrets or whatever. Generally, my understanding is, is that you have the north side there. The intent is going to be for dining and?
Red, uh, sure. Restaurant where Mantle's used to be, a bar where Halix used to be.
Okay.
Uh, Mrs. Stover has moved out, so I don't know what we're going to do there. Second floor be an apartment for years truly.
Okay.
And, uh, office space, third floor eventually is phase 3 planned, hopefully in events hour.
Okay.
At some point.
Good. That, I remember you making mention of that a while ago.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, but, yeah, that's, that's, no, I'm good. I mean, I, I'm understanding.
As far as economic development, the, the investment is, I can tell you, is pretty significant. I prefer not to say publicly.
No, I understand.
But it's.
Yes, sure. It's more than five bucks. I'm good. Is this a?
So this is a resolution.
Resolution, so we just make a motion to suspend or do we approve?
I'll make that motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Mary's got it.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim? John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck on the next.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Swanson, we have to do some internal processing. I'll email you when that paperwork is ready. Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, excuse me, did you want to?
No, I took, yes, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a building program.
Speaking of economic development, Eric's Ice Cream is doing a little bit of remodeling. He's got a canopy out front and he is enclosing that in. He got state building plans for it and I am here to ask for your approval. It's a $65,000 investment.
Mom, would you approve?
I'll second. One of us, put one of us.
You two need to arm wrestle this out for us.
They're pretty in unison tonight.
Too far away.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. And with that, that is the end of our agenda, so we will go around the room. Uh, we'll start with the mayor.
Oh, I think I've said enough tonight. Um, I do want to thank you all. I know that was a lot of discussion, um, with very limited information and, you know, I think everyone handled that really cordially, um, on a topic that is a little delicate with the recent election. Certainly want to congratulate Mr. Kozinplek on another four years on city council. I've appreciated your leadership the last four. So thank you for running and happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. John, would you like to add anything?
I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Engineering?
No, sir.
Law enforcement?
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Fire?
Please be safe for Thanksgiving. I would like to stay and eat my own meal and not come enjoy.
No turkey fryers.
Hot oil burning.
Especially if it's frozen. I heard that they're better when they're frozen.
Kennedy oil. In the garage.[1607.42]